Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Monday, May 20th. It is 7:00 PM. The first case we have for tonight is going to be a continuance. This is case number 22-10, Wall Street Development Corporation for Darwin Lane. At the request of the applicant, they have asked for a continuance until June 5th with an extension of time until July 12th. And we do have some information that's been submitted through to the zoning board office. So if anybody's here for that case, there is some new information, but we're not going to take any information tonight at this hearing. And I see that Board Member Judy Conroy recused herself for this case. So does anybody have any questions on this? I will note that this is one more continuation at the request of the applicant, and I just want to make sure that we're making progress on all these cases, one way or another. So, okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to continue this case until June 17th?
No.
With the next...
June 5th.
I'm sorry. You're right.
Sorry.
Continuation of time until June 5th with an extension of time until July 12th.
So moved.
Moved by Drew?
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion on just continuing this case? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain so carried. Okay. So now into the cases for tonight that we'll be hearing. First one is case number 22-22, Naponts Village at 5 Pleasant Street for a comprehensive permit pursuant to Mass. General Law's 40B to allow construction of 24 townhouse-style condominiums within seven buildings. And the applicant is here tonight. We have a revised plan, so I'll turn it over to you. Please introduce yourself for the record and explain where you're at on this.
Hello. Damian Dimitri. We're Conoco Engineers and Scientists at 4 First Street, Bridgewater, Massachusetts, on behalf of Naponts Village LLC. From our last meeting on April 3rd, we've revised and resubmitted the engineering design plans with the full cul-de-sac redesign, full sewer, stormwater, drainage time utility adjustments, you know, fire truck turning, all the stuff that had been in the previous submissions, you know, just shifted it over towards the cul-de-sac design. Since, you know, so we submitted that on May 2nd, and since then, we've received comments from the town engineer, Carl. His comments were generally minor, some leader tweaks, things to that extent. He had a concern, you know, with the fire truck coordination, making sure that we had the most recent truck. We've reached out and spoke with the fire chief. We had the most recent truck, but there were some minor adjustments to like, you know, including the ladder and some other stuff that, you know, just to clean up the plans as far as that goes. So we're going to be taking care of that. The other major comment for our, not major, but other comment was there's a large oak tree at the front of the entrance on the Norwood property side that Carl was concerned with the traffic visibility on that side. It wasn't mentioned in the plans. If it is an issue, it's a tree on our property, we will remove it. It shouldn't be of concern. You know, it wasn't included in the traffic, but I think the assumption was that it would be removed. It's a cleared area. So from that, we also got the peer review today, comments from the peer reviewer. You know, the major comments, you know, revised landscaping, waiver list, lighting, were all in there. We hadn't submitted that previously. We wanted to get through, make sure that there was no major errors on the engineering side of it that needed to be adjusted and worked out. So it seems like all of that's all set. I will be getting revised landscaping plans, the waiver list and the lighting all, you know, within another submission, an updated revised submission, if that's what the board would like us to do. He did mention, the peer reviewer, mentioned a basketball court striping in the cul-de-sac there because it's such a, you know, big open area, maybe give some recreation there. It was a suggestion. He allocated, advocated for the fact that, you know, recreation in that area might prevent some parking from occurring, you know, and stopping the fire truck. He also, you know, also adding that at recreation. I reached out to the fire deputy chief again, and he said he was going to get back to me tomorrow. I'd love to hear about, you know, from the board or the, you know, butters, if, you know, their thoughts on a basketball court or some type of recreation parking. I still do need to, you know, confirm with my client his thoughts on that as well, but, you know, we just got the peer review letter yesterday or today, and, you know, so it's still getting processed all around, but, you know, figured I'd bring it up to talk about it now. Also a minor sewer concern, you know, adjusting some slopes here and there. Nothing that's going to, you know, major concern should be handled in the next revision. Also, I wanted to bring up at the last meeting, there was concern over care, some clearing on the Norwood property. I had my client look into it. It was not him. It was the abutter encroaching onto our property. So we've reached out to them, you know, gave them the, you know, don't do that. That's not your property type situation, you know. We'll, you know, we'll look into rectifying as much as we need to. Not a concern of, for my client at this time. Again, we just wanted to indicate that it wasn't us moving forward with any form of the construction. It was, you know, encroaching a butter, not knowing their limits on their property line. So, you know, it was, they gravelled it, and I think they were just trying to get some parking and area for them. So we told them, you know, that's, that's not your property. We'll maintain it as necessary moving forward. So yeah, just wanted to come here today, get the board's, you know, thoughts and opinions on the full revised plans, see if there's anything additional that would need to be addressed, and, you know, work out any of the, you know, final revisions and tweaks hopefully.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a question regarding the area that you indicated that the neighbor cleared inadvertently. Is, are you planning to replant that? What's the plan? Are you just going to leave it as cleared in its current condition?
As currently, you know, it'll be a cleared area. You know, it's not in, we're not in any conservation resource areas. It's not overly protected by any, you know, by any means. We could potentially add some landscaping back in there, but, you know, that's, you know, if the board deems necessary, you know, as such, but, you know, and also for, you know, the beauty of the, you know, the subdivision, you know, there may be some landscaping out there, but it is also in the area of, you know, the sightlines and everything to that extent. So, you know, we don't, it'll be a situation at this moment, you know, but we'll leave it as such, you know, and build as the plans show.
Okay. I'd just like you to consider what sort of screening vegetation you could do there, understanding that there are sightline issues, but to the extent that that can be accommodated, that'd be great.
Okay.
Also on that, have you, have you seen the site that we're talking about where the trees were cleared?
I haven't personally seen it. I, but, you know, it was a corner. It was the complete corner of the slot, as I understand.
And it appears as if the, whoever did it also put...
Crushed down.
Crushed, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think it was, again, they were thinking that they could expand their parking and all of that, and that's just not accurate. So again, we reached out to them and, you know, cease and desist, yeah, as far as we can from, you know, an owner. We didn't do anything aggressive or anything to that extent. It was just, you know, want to let you guys know you're not on your property. Granted, it's a future development site, you know. So it's, there's going to be construction occurring there eventually. You know, my client wasn't disappointed, you know, he wasn't upset to a great extent, you know, as he knows that he will be able to, you know, do his development anyway.
Okay. So it comes to a notion of site control. I'm not sure if you have full site control when you can't control people cutting trees and...
Well, it's an undeveloped site with, you know, it's not like we have someone stationed out at the property to watch it or something checking on it, you know. You know, it was a, a butter that came by, you know, who has also previously encroached in the back of the property, you know, far before this. So, you know, it's, you know.
Okay. I also have a question on the new revised plan. It shows on the, there's, looks like seven units close to the people on Pleasant Street. Those, is that, are those patios on the ground? I can't tell, and some of them actually get into the 10, 10-foot setback. What are the, are those decks or patios?
Those are patios.
Patios, okay. Okay. That's all I have for now.
Actually, I have one question. I noticed when we go to the, what was the former emergency access, did we discuss putting, leaving the gate there?
Yeah, I did. It's on my notes for the, the next revision to add that gate back in. You know, it just got lost in the, you know, between the conversations here and getting it onto the plan, you know, making the revisions with the grading and the...
Yep.
Other more, you know, intense engineering design.
No, that's good. I didn't, I had a conversation with the deputy chief earlier, just thinking about it. Within your landscaping plan, are you going to address whatever material is going to be between the hammerhead on Maguire Park and the, and the development?
Yeah, I, yeah, I would assume it's going to be landscaped grass, you know, and lowman seeded for that matter, just because it's going to be a cleared area for snow storage. So, you know, we're not going to want to have any major plantings.
Will that be maintained though?
Will it be maintained? Yeah, I mean, it will be maintained with the, you know, you know, other maintenance that occurs on the site. It will be considered part of the property.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's mowed and not a situation of overgrown.
Okay.
Yep.
Understood.
Okay. Anybody else with questions?
I'm going to wait, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
So at this time, let's open it up to the public and neighbors, and particularly if we'd like to hear about this new suggestion about possible basketball court outline on the, in the cul-de-sac for recreation areas. Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Connell. I represent John Gass, who lives at 7 Pleasant Street. Mr. Gass is unable to attend tonight, but he did want me to just come here on his behalf and just address the concerns that we've been voicing all along with respect to the, the density as well as the, the health and safety concerning the proximity of the bird. So, and, and again, I, we appreciate the board's time, but we feel it's important to just reiterate that this project has really gone in the wrong direction. I think on April 3rd, the, the applicant came back with a concept plan, looking for ideas, but my client, Mr. Gass, lives at, at 7 Pleasant. This has been going on for almost two years now. So the board may not remember, but originally, he didn't have these three condos abutting when the cul-de-sac was, was implemented, proposed to be implemented. Pushed three units here. Again, you had mentioned that the, the setback issues. So the, the density is just, you know, it's, it's really, really concerning. It's our hope that the board would consider either denying the project. I know the hearing's probably not going to close tonight, or substantially reducing the number of units. And again, the concerns are with respect to the health, safety, the local concerns. We believe that it outweighs the need for housing. As far as that, the health and safety, it's, it's not only for the neighbors. Again, they, they currently experience, you know, plumes of dust with being, being abutting certainty, especially in the summer. So Mr. Gass and the neighbors, I think, are really, really concerned about the air quality, the groundwater, groundwater. We feel like the peer review has not really helped, or haven't even looked at it. On numerous occasions, we've, we've asked that they take a peek at it. I know we've gone through the 21E. 21E is from 2014. It's our hope that, that we could get an updated 21E. But there's also, you know, there's also railroad tracks that Bird has, has been operating. They had operated the train, I think, a few years ago as far as moving materials. Concerned about just the, the massive soil disturbance, what happens when all these trees are clear cut in. Again, what, what's going to happen to the existing conditions, the exacerbation of, of the air quality issues. I think you talked a little bit, I know the board had concerns about the open space. That's now gone. I mean, now, the applicant had referenced potentially a basketball court or some type of recreation which is taking the place of the open, open space that was previously there before. We've got parking spaces right here. We've got snow storage. So it's just, it's just never, it's just not heading in the right direction. I'm not going to reiterate, you know, the history of the project. I think some of the board members are aware. Maybe some of the board members have sat when the applicant had, I think it'd come in front of the board in 2016 for, for 12 units. So I would submit, again, and I'll, you know, we'll, I'm sure there'll be a closing at some point, but it's our hope that, that peer review can at least take a peek at it. We've been asking, and I understand how the peer, peer review process works, but they haven't even looked at the air quality issue. I would, I would submit that, you know, if the board deems to reduce the number of units, and that's a condition, that I would hope that the board would, would ask the applicant and get into determine whether the project is, we don't think it would be uneconomic if they end up, you know, reducing a substantial amount of units, especially where my client, again, is right here and has three units abutting here. And I know these are probably issues that the, that the board is, is going to address when they close the hearing. Again, we have an old town council's opinion concerning the, Mr. Chairman, you had mentioned the site control issue here with the Norwood property. We'd ask for an updated town council's opinion concerning the frontage and the, the circle, the Norwood approval. We'd submit that they should go back and, and seek an approval from Norwood. The waivers are, you know, the waivers are substantial. The land disturbance, I think this board's going to act as a land disturbance in, in waiving a land disturbance. But again, given, given Bird, given what's happening there, the current conditions, we're really concerned with the clear cut. And then, you know, lastly, the, the applicants just never reached out to our clients, not that they know, all the neighbors, never discussed the proposed impact, potentially reducing the number of units. So for those reasons, again, I don't want to continue to repeat myself. I've probably been up here on behalf of my client five or six times. My, my client, I think, and the neighbors seem to be very, very reasonable, but now we have a, a concept plan that is now, I guess, coming to fruition where we still have a hammerhead. It's a, it's a cul-de-sac. The access, it seems like it's really one-way access coming in. And I think the board has plenty to really consider in potentially denying this, this project or substantially reducing the number of units. I know how difficult it is for the board, but, you know, we believe that, that there's enough here concerning, you know, health, safety, local concerns that really outweigh the need for housing. And, and again, the, the green space is an issue, and the density is just, just not reasonable given this neighborhood. So again, for those reasons, I appreciate the board's time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
Hi, everybody. My name is Greg Island. Living at Maguire Park. I'm an immediate abutter to, to this project. It's in discussion today. So I've been up here quite a few times as well, talking about a number of concerns, and quite honestly, I find this update a little bit absurd. It's a very aggressive plan. The, the issue that I obviously have is that we've been up here multiple times. We've gone through multiple sessions. I've been up here multiple times, and there's just, there's been like just no meaningful update with, you know, addressing the, the density or like what we actually want to be like, to create this community, to help bring this community upright, single-family homes, and this amount of density in such a strange location with everything that's abuts it, with the railroad track, the plant, everything else. You know, said it, said it multiple times. I've said it before, you know, I've, I've talked about this now with coworkers and friends, and they're like, everybody's first response is like, how can they do that? How is that allowed? How, how is that even possible? And I'm just, I don't know. So, and obviously that's people that aren't familiar with the matter. I also recently ran into, I'm a member of the zoning board from Norwell, town next door. He was actually familiar with the, the previous plans and actually told him about what was happening in that, in this area now. And he was, he just was like ridiculous. And I quote, like he just was like taken aback, like, no, God, they can't, that's impossible. They can't do that. So now we have somebody, you know, from the next town, familiar with the situation from a different board, you know, also like seeing how ridiculous this, this current plan is. We've talked about multiple times, safety, aesthetic, a lot of concerns, but it really, I mean, it's just putting us in like a really difficult position as a butters, right? Like where, you know, we, we have to look at the situation and really address like what, what are we going to do in our current neighborhood if this moves forward, like as is? Because I mean, I'm, I'm just really, really concerned. Dozens have a butters have come through here, like in and outright. I mean, you know, pretty, pretty tight, small, single-family neighborhood. Everybody's familiar with the matter, what's going on. Obviously not, it's, it's tough to come up here and talk about it because it's, it's really hits everybody home. It's hard to talk in front of people, obviously, but, you know, we've had a lot of people come through here, and everybody has the same comments. So, you know, hopefully we'll be able to address some of the concerns that we have. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Alan Williams. I'm at 15 Maguire Park, and I, like Greg and others, have been up here multiple times. You've heard me say, I'm just looking for the peer review letter. I was going to quote part of it here. What paragraph is it? It's the second page of his letter. Pardon me. It's an update on fire apparatus turning analysis. Sheets nine and 10, if you go down onto the second sheet. He says, "The revised emergency access reduces but does not eliminate the potential for using Maguire Park during construction," he says. "We continue to recommend any approval include a condition precluding the use of Maguire Park for anything other than improvements proposed within, and that no equipment or materials be stored or staged within the Maguire Park right-of-way while work is not in progress." So his comments were targeting the construction phase. My point, if you will, is nothing will change after construction. If those conditions exist prior to and during construction that he observed, they will continue to exist after. May I?
Sure.
So I've mentioned this before. We're here. Our house is here, and we've lived almost 10 years here. When, and I'm making a point about the hammerhead and snow storage, if you will. A dump truck, a small dump truck is about all that can make it. Comes down head-on and piles the snow from our street in two or three passes at the edge of pavement. He's done. He's done. If there's more snow, he adds on to that, and you know, it creates a berm, and he's done. He backs out. If there's a huge salting truck, they back down our street and salt right to the edge of pavement and then pull out frontwards. That's been working for 10 years. It's difficult for me to understand why a hammerhead is needed going forward. If it's to accommodate this project, and if you look at the distance between the pavement of the hammerhead and the pavement of the final parking spot, you are, as I said before, you are inviting people to use it. So they have perhaps reduced the inclination to use Maguire Park, but they have not eliminated it. And I thought, pardon me, I forgot about the microphone. I thought that that was the drift of the board, that the recommendation was to stay away from Maguire Park and to reduce the density. And one point, I, I apologize for repeating myself, but on the 40A submission, the cul-de-sac was, there was no outlet because snow storage was throughout the site in small spots. Because it's so dense, that's the only place they can put it now. And how often does it's... I'm sorry. I don't mean to laugh. How often will the overburdened area actually contain snow? 20 days a year? 30 days a year? What will happen to it all those other days if we're allowed to let them do this? So from my perspective, I'm trying to be reasonable about this. It seems to me that they haven't addressed the cul-de-sac snow storage issue, and they have not addressed the density issue. I think that's all, I think that's, I've made my point. Thank you for your time, everyone.
If I could just say on that, the, the cul-de-sac is something that we thought that was, along with the neighbors, we thought that was a step in the right direction.
It is.
Okay. So, so let's say that...
Did I make it seem like it wasn't?
Well, you said there's still two issues. The cul-de, you know...
The outlet, sir.
You said, "Stay away from Maguire Park," and I, that's what we've done at this point. It does not connect. Right?
Connected by pavement.
Right. And there's other things we can do. There'll be a gate there. We can even have boulders put there. If, you know, what, the intent, the intent is that it is not going to connect to Maguire Park. Maguire Park will have, at least under this proposal, have a hammer, a hammerhead there. Is that what you, now, do you know? And that's from the, that's from the town, town engineering department, and they're saying that will make things better.
I, I think, I beg your pardon if I wasn't clear. The cul-de-sac is absolutely needed. It's the only way that this will work at all, in my view. What I was concerned about was that the hammerhead, which they haven't needed up till now, that's the only point I was making, would invite people to cross over and use Maguire Park. That's the only point I was making. And if there's no, nothing to mitigate that, no boulders, no gate, because signs won't do it.
Right.
People are already using this. People come from, you know, delivery trucks, as I've mentioned, just go right over it as if it's, they don't care whether it's paved or not. And when, when the hearings are over, if there's an issue here, the residents of Maguire Park will be on our own. Right. So that's, yes, we need the cul-de-sac. Yes.
Got the cul-de-sac, and now we need to make sure that it does not connect to the, the hammerhead.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that can be all done with, with conditions. And to your other point about the density, we've talked, we've said density, and this is a 40B project, and we have, this board has little ability to control the density on that. And that's, that's what we're running into. We hear you loud and clear. We've said it from the beginning, but unless the applicant chooses to reduce it, there's not a lot that we can do.
So, I don't mean to be unreasonable. So if the board says should be less dense, if the neighbors say it doesn't fit the neighborhood, the applicant can, can say in this, in a 40B instance, they could ignore all of those comments and proceed with the same number of units. Is that what...
That is correct, and it's because it's considered affordable housing. And if people have a problem with it, they, which I think you do, you should talk to your state representative and your state senator, because this is a state, a state law that's being put on us.
I see.
The 40B. It's not something, it's not something...
I understand.
The zoning board...
There's nothing vindictive from the board here at all. I don't see.
But people need to understand where this is coming from, and it's, the density is coming from what they're allowed to do because of the state of Massachusetts. Not, the town of Walpole wouldn't allow this kind of density, but because it's an affordable project, it's allowed by the state.
So what we are trying to do as a, as a butters is say, okay, if that's the case, how can we make it the least impactful on us? And we appreciate your help very much in that regard. Thank you.
Seth Williams, 15 Maguire Park. How's everybody doing?
Good.
I took the wind out of it a little bit, right? When you really think about that with 40B, because there really isn't much that we can do about it. So we appreciate, as an abutter, the consideration of...
So we appreciate, as in a butter, the consideration of how the access is made. I think that's really important. It's really hard to be thankful when a decision is made to not use an access point that should never even been on the table because Maguire Park is an impossible access point, so. But, you know, I think the hard thing that I have, as I was looking through the peer review letter a couple hours ago, is I feel like we lose comments from the past review letters because things have gotten worse. So it'll say like resolved because it doesn't exist. You know, like there's a comment about recreation and like, oh, there's grass here and there's a gazebo, but it should be something more. And now they're like, comment resolved because that's all just been wiped out. There's no grass, there's no recreation area. And they're like, why don't you just put some paint on the street and say it's a basketball court? So I have a hard time, I think, and I'm just keeping up with the peer review letters and kind of making my own consolidated group of comments. And the one that I want to read out loud that was, I think, the most impactful from December 6th, 2023, is, it was talking about the thoughtfulness of the plan, the materials, the buildings, all of that. And then it said, "That being said," and I apologize for not knowing what paragraph, but this is an exact quote, "The project represents a very dense development of the site, leaving no, little, little if no, practical options for addressing any unforeseen future needs while presenting significant short-term construction challenges. As it may, as, and as such, even small changes may impact the site layout." So I think, you know, we may not have control over the density, but if the density is so packed that we have no control over the impact, over where a light post goes or a fire, anything, then it's too dense and it's impacting other decisions that we do have control over. So that's the part that gets me is, we want the cul-de-sac. It's, I think, a two-family property, like zoned for two-family or multifamily. If it had a multifamily on it, we'd be talking to you saying like, hey, this is great. Can we have a tree in the back of yard or something like that? But this, it's, it's so crazy, there isn't an inch for anything. So I just wanted to state, the two biggest issues that we've always talked about are how it's accessed and how much is stuffed into it. And so really appreciate Maguire Park being taken under consideration. The peer reviewer said there should be some comments in there to protect Maguire Park during it. Love to see those written in stone. I also think that, you mentioned boulders. Love that you said that, Mr. Lee. I think boulders at the end of Maguire Park, like at the top of the T, so that people don't go into that private property, which they're doing every single day right now. And then boulders to the right of the hammerhead to kind of say, this is Maguire Park snowload. This is the property's snowload. And I know the, the representation for the applicant here said, you know, we're going to have some grass and some other things on that path. Like it needs to be like this, these are two different sets of bitment, pavement, whatever. They're never to be connected. And I think if there's giant boulders and maybe even some hedge line at the right of the hammerhead here, you know, somewhere here, just saying, like you can push as much snow as you want here, but this ends right at this fold. You can't go this way. And here, Maguire, you can't go this way. You don't even need a gate because it's permanent. You know, so just, that's, that's it. And I appreciate it and looking forward to future meetings.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one more time, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I, I would respectfully request, with respect to density, I would hope that the board, and I think the board does have some authority to consider reducing the number of units because of the density and setting that as a condition. And again, I understand, you know, I understand 40B and, and what happens with denials, but I think there are extraordinary circumstances here that I think would be reasonable and consistent with local needs, again, because of the health and safety issues. Local concerns outweigh the need for housing. So whether they reduce three units, move them, I mean, they could, they could try to move them in back, but again, I would hope that the board, and I think the board has the authority to do that, given the concerns. And again, I would ask that the board really address some of these health and safety issues, which we, we feel like hasn't happened. You know, site control, again, the Norwood. Let's get an updated, let's get an updated letter from town council concerning whether Norwood has to be involved. The board hasn't considered that. So I would respectfully just request that the board seriously consider reducing the number of units. And, and hopefully the applicant would be willing to work with the neighbors. I don't think it's an all or nothing, but I think the board, you know, would be on good fitting to do that. And again, really take a look to potentially mitigate some of these health and safety issues. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? So the health and safety issues that I understand relating to the operation of Certitude next door and air quality, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Are you aware of any air quality violations associated with their operation through GEP or any other agency?
I'm not, but it's, it's really just, no, just for us, just for us...
I'm not debating whether there is or not.
First hand, what the neighbors have told me, maybe the neighbors can speak to this better than I can, but if you, if you drive through there during the summer, you know, there's, there's dust, there's plume. And I think, you know, my client's concern is once this plant cutting of these trees, then the, the air quality issue is going to be exacerbated.
Can you elaborate on that?
Again, my client's really just concerned that when all these trees come down, it's just going to open, it's just going to open things up. And, you know, they're manufacturing asphalt shingles and it's going to, it's going to make the situation worse. He's concerned that when they start disturbing all the soil, there's railroad tracks, he's not concerned, there's railroad ties. He's just really concerned with how it's going to affect not only air quality but the groundwater. And again, he just speaks from personal experience and again, the neighbors can probably speak to it, but once all these, these trees are plant cut, and there's going to be more trees that have to be plant cut with, you know, with respect to the increased density. So, you know, you, you probably went through the 21E, Mr. Fitzgerald. It's from 2014. It, it just identified how many things have happened in that area, surrounding area. So again, we really feel like there's some legitimate concerns concerning the health and safety, clean air, clean water, and, and that it might be legitimate for the board to consider those and potentially conditioning the client to decrease the number of units.
I, I mean, I agree with you that health and safety is a basis for denying a project, even if it's a 40B. I'm just trying to drill down on some of the specifics that you're raising, like the air quality issue that I mentioned, and then you mentioned water quality as well, but I'm not quite, it's not quite clear to me how this, this particular project or even the adjacent one, which the, obviously the applicant doesn't have control over what happens next door, but how is the water quality going to reach a level of health and safety?
Yeah, again, I can't, I can't answer it. It's just, he's just concerned about all the plant cutting of the trees and, and again, you know, how it's going to affect just the runoff and, and groundwater. We were hoping that peer review would look at it, but they, they seemed not to have, you know, wanted to or maybe it's just not part of their purview, but it was our hope that they could. And even the 21E, we thought they were going to look at the 21E report from 2014, but, but they haven't. And again, he has, you know, he hasn't, he hasn't gotten an expert.
No, I'm just, that's...
You can imagine how expensive, yeah.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Does anybody else have anything on this development? Yes.
I just, that last point, I live in that neighborhood. About 12 years ago, 13 years ago, we had events where the smokestacks emitted so much soot that people had their cars covered with it. And Robin Chappelle was the health agent at the time, but apparently she couldn't get anywhere because it was primarily, I guess the source was considered to be Norwood. But if you did a test, if you had anybody test the air there, I don't mean to be tattling, but I have empathy for the people who are ground zero here. I walk a dog at night, like 11 o'clock. They start running the smokestacks as it gets dark, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock, 12 o'clock, it's full blast, two stacks. In the morning, no. During business hours, when health agents and people around, nothing. But at night, you can taste it in the air. Sometimes you can see it, sometimes you can feel it, you can see the orange dust, et cetera. So if anybody did a legit, I mean, you might have to have a real specialist some type to do this. This isn't maybe typical what a board of health...
Hold on. Are you talking about this property or are you talking about the Certitude property?
I'm, I'm talking about what falls out of the air in East Walpole.
Okay. You're talking about Certitude, which is located in Norwood, and we are talking about this property right here. There's no smokestacks, there's no manufacturing taking place on this, so...
Again, the people have a health issue in, with the air in there that might be part of a mitigation for their cause. It might have to be cleaned up before they add more residents. Just, just a thought. Thank you.
I know you have a packed agenda. Just a question, really. What, you know, when we think about post-project, so now we're just talking about the property, the trees are cut, the big concern is, is, is the air, did the trees filter from the factory? Clearly that's, you know, the pollution's coming from Norwood. There's also light pollution from the factory because when they, I think when they designed Certitude, because of the forest is there, they weren't concerned at all about light, light exposure to the residents. The tree's gone now, once they're all gone, those lights are just facing East Walpole, which does concern the residents. Is there a process for that post-project to, do we have to work with Norwood if we'd like to ask them to redirect some of their lighting? Just some of the stuff that comes to our mind.
I would say that would be, if they were willing to talk to you about it, and it wouldn't be Norwood, it'd be the factory.
Actual factory.
Yeah. And what we can do here is the zoning board, looking at this case and this property, we can condition it to the landscape plan. And I think that's one of the things that the applicant has said the next phase. And is that correct? That's the next phase that you're going to be looking at is the landscape design plan?
Yeah, we'll be confirming, you know, revising the landscape for the cul-de-sac design. It will, you know, be similar to the previous plans, just adjusted accordingly.
Yeah. And that's where they put in buffers to the neighbor's property with, you know, vegetated buffers with the landscaping and hopefully that can, in time, you know, provide some, some protection for the, for the neighbors. But you have mature trees there right now and that's, that's probably going to change.
Yeah. So it's just, it's just something that we, when you hear it from us, that's where, when you have 100-foot tree, 50-foot tree versus a seven-foot arborvitae, yeah.
Yeah.
And all the lights from the factory and all these big poles that are...
But that's why it's important that in the landscape plan, it's clear, you know, that you get the protections that are reasonable. You know, they can't replace a 50-foot tree, but they can have this done correctly. And we've done it for many other developments, not just 40Bs, where they get protection for the neighbors through vegetated buffers.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Judith, do you have questions?
Yes, I do. It sounds like the applicant is, from what some of the folks have said, has not reached out to the neighborhood. Is there anyone here tonight other than the engineer from the Paunted Village LLC of Bridgewater, Massachusetts? So you come alone. And I think I expressed some concern, the last time we had questions and comments, then Mr. Mackey wasn't even here. Is he still representing this, the property? The applicant? Okay. So Mr. Mackey's not here and the applicant is not here. Okay. My concern is, we are listening to you folks, meeting after meeting. I understand you're frustrated, I'm frustrated. We don't even have an applicant who's willing to sit through these hearings while we decide what we're going to do with it. Are you relaying, Mr. Damian, are you, are you relaying all this information back?
Yes.
Okay. So, and it's a, it's a big nothing burger from the conversations that we've had about density?
And this is my client's preferred, this is my client's preferred layout. This is the plans that we're bringing to the board. You know, I relay the information to them. You know, they are presented with it, but they continue to believe that this is the best layout and opportunity for the property.
Okay. So I guess that's not a strong enough answer for me. I'd like to hear from the applicant or the applicant's attorney that they've had intensive conversation about, my feelings anyway, about the density. And I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with you responding that this is what we're going to do. That's my opinion. And just on a minor thing, we talked about increasing the recreation space. The green space is gone. And I find it, even from our peer review, to even suggest a basketball court in a cul-de-sac, which further on in the letter said, would still have to be approved by the fire department if they would allow painting of a court in the cul-de-sac for safety reasons. So you got a nothing. I feel that it's a nothing. Took away green space, it's still too dense. I don't feel that anyone's listening. I don't feel the applicant's listening at all. He thinks he just can send you and we're supposed to believe that you go back and have this conversation. I, I just feel like we need more information from the applicant or the applicant's attorney. A breakdown of where this financially falls apart and maybe my chairman might say it's not our business. I think it is. This is a dense, dense project. And that, that's where I'm at. I mean, I don't care about landscaping, I don't care about painted basketball stripes in a hoop. That's, that is not what this is supposed to be about. So that's it for now.
Yes.
I'll be, I'll be very quick. I've said it many times, the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, this project is in that district and...
No, it's not.
I, I thought it was in a water resource area.
No. There's no wells anyplace remotely near this. But I always do appreciate your comments on water resource protection areas, Mr. Hamilton. Okay. Anybody else? So at this point, the applicant has heard the concerns and comments. One thing, I still didn't, the neighbors that got up talked about the, the density, we all get that, the density. Thoughts on the, this idea of a basketball court? You know, people like it, dislike it? I, I'm only doing this for the, the applicant, so you know whether that's something to pursue or just, you know, put it, put it aside. But that was from the peer review. That's the idea. We're trying to make this project the, the best we can get out of it. So...
I mean, they can, they could do full court, 10-on-10. I don't know how many people are going to live there, so they could do like a full NBA team, I think, with 24 units. So I don't know if there's enough room for that, but I don't give a crap about paint, recrea, I think people are going to figure out where to go. Bird Park's really close to there, I think. I, I wish the peer reviewer was here too. I feel like we had all these folks here and now, Judith, I'm, I'm now concerned, like, are they watching the rerun? Like, why am I wasting my breath? I appreciate all of you hearing it, but it's directed to applicant. I don't see notes being taken, like six people have spoken. So I appreciate the question about the basketball court. I think the peer reviewer needs to dig in deeper, read his own notes and, and keep, keep firm on what the reviewers... and keep firm on what the reviewer's supposed to be doing, which is representing another organization without money in the game. So--
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Converse's point, we'd like you to look at whether it's economical or uneconomical if the applicant reduces the number of units. We're concerned about basketball court, we're concerned about open space, green space. That's gone. So we'd ask that the board delve into the financials and have the applicant determine, you know, make a case as to why three, you know, a reduction of three or four units, even if they place them in back, is going to be uneconomical for them. I would submit that the board certainly has the authority to do that. Council hasn't been here, the applicant hasn't been here. So we'd ask that the board request that the applicant show up, and let's look at the numbers, potentially reducing the number of units to create more open space. Thank you.
Okay. Please relay that to your applicant, to your development team, that there's concerns about open space and density. That's what it is.
And I'd just add, concerns that the applicant and his attorney are not present to address some of the legal questions and economic questions associated with the project.
I understand the legal questions and the economics on this. I would like to, you know, just that need to be addressed, so I can relay them appropriately, if there are any legal concerns there. And then additionally, economics, I believe, were supplied in the mass housing application that has been supplied to the board at the beginning of this process. So I think those are both there and have been presented. So again, I'm happy to relay information that isn't been supplied, or, you know, what they need to do. And the density, the economics, were all supplied in the mass housing application.
That is correct. The preliminary financials are provided in the application, so that the applicant could get a letter of eligibility from mass housing. I think what we could be looking for, depending on how this goes, is a more detailed look at the finances, to make sure--
And legally, Mr. Chairman, again, just a Norwood piece, we're asking for an updated town council's letter, which we don't have. I think the last was from 2000, might be 2018, or 2016. Again, just concerning, you know, using this area for any frontage, any curb cuts, and they should go back to Norwood. Norwood has a more restrictive zoning. So I'd submit those are legal issues that they should look at. And we'd ask that town council update the correspondence concerning control.
Okay.
Thank you.
I was going to say, you know, speaking of the Norwood issue, it's a non-issue. The project isn't within Norwood. They've been notified through the process of a public hearing. There's no development with Norwood, so it's not like the applicant--
Have they gone to Norwood, have they applied?
Do not need to. They do not need to. The project is within Walpole. Just because that portion of the project is owned by the applicant, the project is not within Norwood, it's within Walpole.
Did they seek a determination from someone in Norwood, from any of the boards? And who's making that determination? If it's town council, fine, I'd just like to see an updated letter.
It's just what it is. So they're notified through the public hearing process, as all of our budding planning boards are for neighboring towns. The project is not in Norwood. The project is in Walpole. They're not applying to Norwood.
I understand, but they're using some of the Norwood land. So who's making the determination? Walpole's making the determination, right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So at this point, you've got your work lined up for you with landscaping plan, talked to your applicant, I mean, talked to your site proponent on our concerns that were raised tonight. And obviously, it's available online, they can watch this. So we had, do you want to continue until June 17th with an extension of time until July 31st?
I agree. That is fine.
Okay. Does somebody want to make anything else for tonight on this? So for the neighbors, at the request of the applicant, they're asking to continue this case until June 17th, when they'll come back with revised landscape plans for this, and an extension of time until July 31st. Does somebody want to make a motion to that effect? 7:00 here at Town Hall.
So moved.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Second by Drew. Any further discussion on continuing this at the request of the applicant, and an extension of time? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. So this goes out until June 17th. Okay. The next case we have tonight is case number 24-6, for a property located at 1160 Main Street, for a special permit under Section 5B 13N of the Walpole zoning bylaws, in order to allow parking for eight vehicles instead of four, which is allowed by right. And is the--
Christopher Reed, I resided at address, 1160--
Okay. You know what, let me see if we have some pieces of correspondence on this before--
We do. As a matter of fact, some of the variables have changed on this since I first applied, so--
So we have a letter from town engineer Cal Baldoff.
Yes.
And he said in this, he refers to the plans that were submitted. He said, "I note the following. The request is for up to eight vehicles. The sketch appears to show only seven. This would make it a guess as to where the eighth vehicle would be parked. Two, the plan shows only locations of what appear to be the proposed parking spots, and no other details other than a photo, which appears to show the right-of-way being partially constructed as a gravel drive. The board should be aware, any expansion of the gravel parking would also need conservation approval, as the area is proximal to the Nippon City River. Three, the board should be aware that if they grant this application the right to park in the right-of-way, that the board may be granting permission over rights of other owners of lots 7A, 8A, and 9A currently undeveloped, for the, to use the right-of-way for passage utilities, et cetera, which are generally available to owners along private ways, right-of-ways. Perhaps the board should consider a condition addressing this situation, should they grant relief." We have a letter from the fire department. They have no technical comments at this time. Plan shows seven spots instead of eight, as being requested. Board of Health has no comments. Planning Board has no comments at this time. And we can go from there. So if you would, introduce yourself and explain what's being proposed.
Christopher Reed, like I said, 1160 Main Street. So basically, what is being proposed is like, I was unaware initially that there was a four-car restriction for parking. I live in a four-bedroom home, and between me and my wife, we own almost four vehicles. And, you know, I have a car in a truck, a work truck. And my wife has a vehicle, and one of them's a backup vehicle, for her vehicle. And then I have my brother-in-law, and I have two boys. So there's one through three more vehicles, which obviously gets very difficult. So I guess the need is there. Obviously, I have the need for the vehicles, but we have the issue with the private way. So after doing a little research into this, I realized that it's very close to doubling up cars, because I think, I don't know what the actual measurement is, but I'm using up to do double. I can show you a photograph. I'm using up close to 20 feet to come off the, to come off the house double vehicle. And that's where I was kind of showing it on the small photograph that I showed you, where it looks as though it's actually on it. It may be on it a couple feet, but it's not actually on it, on it.
On what?
On the private way.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, so it was a little bit more understanding as I went along, and as I read the online, I read what they had mentioned. And then I had thought like something was done away with, but I guess it was further back, somebody did some development and did away with further private way, but not the initial private way. So I found out from Dan Wood, who's my abutter, and John Hassanegger, who's actually here today, I believe, was another abutter, for that private way. But nothing can be built back there, apparently. People have tried to buy the property. I'm in the process of probably buying the property behind me. I have one small issue, is preventing me, which has something to do with some hazardous waste that was upstream, that might, may now be downstream, and I want to make sure before I purchase this land that that is not going to be a problem, and I'm not going to have to clean up some sort of waste from years ago. And John is also, I've been in communication with him, possibly purchasing that land. If I was to purchase both those lands, then I wouldn't need to worry about the private way. I don't want to develop nothing. I'd rather not develop anything. I don't think you can, because it's wet lands behind me. The river's right there, and then you got a brook running right through it. So you really can't develop anything there. So basically, if the tires are hanging over, I can't legally park on it. So I could show you this photograph, I could pass it around. I wish I knew, I could have made it something bigger, or I could have made one for everybody. Kind of gives a view of how they're parked, and that I could literally park 10 cars that way, but I'm not looking for that many. As a matter of fact, it's actually on the side of the house, I'll show you. This picture of the side of the house, I actually have enough room for one vehicle there, where I'd like to put another car garage, but it turns out I need a lot more work before I can do that. I need not just the site plan, I need an elevation plan, and I need an abutters plan, which throws it way up over my budget that I initially had. So I'm going to probably have to wait on that, especially if I'm purchasing land out back. It all becomes just a financial thing, you know. So basically, I may or may not be able to fit six vehicles instead of eight. I don't know if that means I have to revise something, or change something.
So, there's a lot of things that need to happen before we can--
Okay, absolutely. Fill me in.
So, what we have before us is a plan that goes back to 1945. It's not stamped. You've seemed to drew some rectangles representing cars on this. We need a--
There's a six, this one made in 1960, I believe. This is a closer one, a newer one.
It wasn't clear.
1960?
Yeah. So the one he's referring to, I believe it's in the project's file, where there was writing on it, he has a copy of it, it just was illegible--
Okay. So, so either way, the zoning board cannot, you know, even address these issues until we have an updated plot plan that shows what's there today, where the house is, where everything is. We're looking at basically old data that you've since drawn on, and we need to have a survey plan, so that we understand what you're asking for, exactly what you're asking for. Everybody that comes to the zoning board has to have plot plans.
Yeah, so I'm gonna, eventually, I needed logic garage, so I'm moving in that direction. So I see that I'm gonna have to wait and just move in that direction, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I see that, really, this has just been a kind of falsehood coming forward without the plan.
That's right. I mean, you said it. I would not say that, because I respect you.
I could say if I saw it.
You know, that's, we can't make any decision--
Right.
And we can't even understand what you're asking for unless we have the plan. So--
It's pretty simple, yeah.
Well--
And I'm not gonna have--
It's pretty simple, yes. You need to get a plan.
I don't know what it would take, how long that would take, or how long I could put off a revisit back there. Can I ask for an extension of this until I get a plot plan? Because I need one for multiple reasons.
So why don't we, I see Mr. Crowley's here, and if, Mr. Crowley, do you want to comment on this, to, you know, bring us up to date where we're at on this?
Sure.
Thank you. Jim Crowley, building commissioner. Basically, on this project was, we sent a violation out probably a year ago, or two years ago, for multiple cars on the lot. They were reduced. We had other issues with a multitude of other problems, shed on existing Mr. Wood's property, ladders, trucks blocking Mr. Hassanegger's property. They were moved. Then probably back in May, it happened again, May of last year, it happened again. So we also sent second violation out. And that's how we ended up here today. We got another complaint back in March. We went out, I talked to the applicant, and explained, again, that he can't have this amount of cars, especially on a private way. And explained that, yeah, he can park there, but it's up to the neighbors and the right to cross over the land, that the police will not come out and move the cars, because it's private property. But it is a right to cross over, that he can't be parking on the private way. And we gave him the options of either move all the cars, appeal me to the zoning board, or apply to the zoning board for more parking. And that's how we ended up here with the more parking.
Okay. So--
So my general idea is I apply, but I didn't realize that I should probably have a--
Plot plan, survey plot. A survey plot plan showing what's there now, what you're asking for, where it would go. And, you know, then you have to, then there comes the question, you know, do you want to spend all that money?
I need it for a garage, anyway. Yeah. So I got to move forward on all this. And, you know, if I'm purchasing the property, that I'm going to need it for that, too.
But the problem is, Mr. Crowley-- Is he in violation, he's in violation right now? Oh, good.
Yes, he's in violation right now. Again, the fines and the violation have frozen, because he moved forward with this appeal. So until the decision's made, he still is in violation. And purchase the property at the back won't help, because if he purchased the property, it's in his name. The property he lives in now is not his property. So you can't combine two properties from separate owners. So that won't be any help. If he does decide to do it, under the owner buys the property at the back, that is fine. Putting a shed there is fine as well, but he would be required to come back in front of this board, because again, if he's going to be garaging up over eight cars, that's still a special permit. So he's still coming back in front of you.
So ours, if we purchase the land, would all be on the JD1 Realty, would all be on the same. So we could combine it, and it'll alleviate the need to have the private way. That way, she could have her property back, the neighbor, and I could have my property back there, and I'd be able to have plenty of parking.
I'm not-- No. So, Mr. Crowley, do you want to explain--
It's come back before you, and to apply.
I think the issue, Mr. Crowley, explain what the issue is--
The issue is, even if you buy the property, it does not alleviate the private way. The private way is owned by each abutter of the property. So unless you buy all four properties, and abandon the right-of-way, then you can abandon, and then it becomes null and void. But because there's a neighbor that owns one parcel, Mr. Hassanegger owns a second parcel, and right now, Mr. Wood owns a fourth parcel, per se, that private way is not abandoned, unless they all give up their rights to it.
I thought it was just two.
Four people on it in total. J Realty, Ms. Brown, I believe, Mr. Hassanegger, and Mr. Wood, all have the right to cross over.
And this is exactly why we need to have updated plans that show who the owners are, and--
Right. So it makes more sense just to go for the garage, then I can keep the car inside the garage. I know, it's not going to be on her property, it's not going to need the right-of-way. What I need to do is just get the plot plan, so that on my property, without use of the private way, without purchase of anything else, that I could just ask for a couple more cars that can be started on my property, period. That should be a doable thing. Am I correct, or--
No, not right now, because we don't know--
Not until I get--
And even then, even then, why would you be allowed to have more cars than other people are allowed to have? What's the reason for it?
To be honest with you, I don't understand a four-bedroom, where I have me and my wife in one bedroom, we have two cars. Isn't that typical of most people, have a car for their wife in there?
Right. Right, two cars isn't the problem. The problem is that you have, the issue that we're dealing with is that only four, four cars are allowed by right.
On the property, correct. And so what I'm trying to do is move forward in any way, whatever I need to do, so that I can have either, at least six, because that's basically what I have there now, six cars, so my wife can have a separate vehicle and myself, and so if my brother-in-law moves significant other in, they have vehicles in another bedroom. If my son in a third bedroom has his girlfriend come stay with him, there's two, you know, that's how quick you end up with six cars, eight cars in your driveway. It's just boom, 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 it's just, you know, never mind events. I know, you're looking at me like I got two heads. I mean, this is...
No, I understand, I understand your problem, but the, the, the bylaw allows four cars.
Correct.
And you're, you're over that, and so...
So I was led to the impression that you could apply for more if there was a need.
Okay, and...
And there's a need, obviously, because me and my wife alone, I mean, we're in one bedroom, and I guess it's, it's judging a four-bedroom home has four-car parking. Well, in one bedroom, you need two cars just for that. And then, so if you have three other bedrooms, somebody else comes over, more cars, that's what I'm just saying. That's why we need, that's my need for it. What I need to do to, to obtain that, to get to there, is, is why I'm actually here in front of you.
Okay.
You know? So I, I understand the first step I need for more than one reason is to get a plot plan.
Right.
Makes sense, right?
Yes, so...
Although you don't seem very confident that even after the...
No, I, I don't know, you know, I don't even know why, to be honest, I don't even know why you were allowed to file this with, without having an updated plot plan, but that's...
I guess we use whatever was on file. I, I guess, I don't know either, so that's why I'm asking, if we could postpone it till I get one.
Okay. So, how much time do you think you would need to get a plot plan and show where the cars would be, and...
Actually, how long do you think it typically takes this fellow over here? Probably does better than me.
Couple months.
If they're all busy at the moment, it would probably take, I would say I could go, go with 30 to 60 days, and, and if it's not done by then, I would just ask for whatever's needed after that fact.
Mr. Chairman, would it be prudent to suggest the applicant withdraw without prejudice and come back with a full application with everything that you need, and then we don't have to keep doing extensions and things?
Then I'd be carrying another $400 cost. So I would, I would prefer to ask for 30 days, and then if I need more time at that time, just push it forward. I mean, $400 plus, I gotta go for with other expenses. I couldn't just ask for an extension?
No, you can...
I'm just throwing it out there.
I like your idea, but this is the applicant's hearing, so what you can do is, you can ask for a continuance and get that, those materials, but...
Beautiful, thank you.
But when, how much time do you want for a, to continue this out for?
I would, I would ask for at least 30, if not 60, days, and I would just come back in and say, here's the delay, if there is one. Does that make sense?
At which point, if there is a delay, the board, the board might decide that...
You've waited long enough.
Yeah, that we would say, okay, well, we're gonna...
So I would ask for the furthest away you could give me, a couple months, 60 to 90 days.
Okay.
Just to give it time, that's all I can...
August 7th.
What's that?
There's one on August 7th.
Is it a regular meeting?
It's a regular Wednesday meeting.
Okay.
Perfect, yeah.
Is that, is August 7th?
I mean, we could, we could do that, but we'd do an extension of time.
Oh, absolutely.
To, like, August 31st?
Yep.
Yeah, it's the end of the month.
As long as August 7th is a regular, I'm trusting Drew. It's a regular meeting, it's not an afternoon, it's not an extra, okay.
Mr. Crowley, so, his fines for the violations will continue to stay, is that, that's what's going to happen?
So the freeze, so the fines just freeze, once the moving party is moving forward to show that they're trying to fix the problem, the fines stay, the freeze. If he decided to, say, withdraw, and then come back at a later date, then the fines would restart again if he kept all the cars there.
Okay, okay.
Just so the board knows, and I've moved two vehicles and rented a spot across the street. I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but, okay. So there's all that parking across the street. So I've actually got a couple spots over there.
Spots over there, okay. Okay, is there anybody from the audience that wants to comment on this?
Yes.
Yep, no, right, right up front here. You can come first.
Michelle Brown, 1168 Main Street. I've actually lived at my property since 2002. He moved in 2010, I believe. At no time has he had four vehicles. Currently, he has seven. At one point, he even parked a boat on the middle part of the property. He was told he couldn't have it there. The rules don't apply to him. I, I don't know if you guys got those pictures?
No.
Seven vehicles? This is what I look at every day? I'm about ready to block my kitchen windows up because the fumes, the noise, this is what I look at out my kitchen window every day. If you scroll up, you'll see the rest of the pictures. There are currently seven. There's never been four. I'm, and the reason for all the vehicles, the applicant failed to mention, he's running a rooming house, so he has family there. The vehicles aren't from people visiting. That would be more vehicles on top of the current seven. That's why he wants at least eight. So at times, the people living there have literally driven on my front lawn to get in and out. It's stressful. I'm getting ready to put security cameras up, because at that point, once I have the cameras and I'm taping him, I'm going to call the police. It's very stressful. There's many things going on at the property. I'm sure people at the health department, you know, they're aware of everything going on, and it just doesn't end. It never ends, it's very stressful. I live alone with my grandson and my cat. My grandson's here with me, he's 21. And like I said, we've been living here since 2002. He moved in 2010. It's been chaos, it's been a nightmare, the noise, the mess from the cars. And like I said, the, you know, if he's allowed eight, it's not going to be eight, it's going to be 10, 12. You know, at one point, he had a construction, a storage container there. He was told he had to remove it. You know, the rules don't apply to him, he parks on other people's property, he's built a shed on someone else's property, you know? And only because he's started to get fines is he's even attempting to appear to comply. So I'm just really distressed by all of this. You know, I had to take ti, I work 12 to 8, I had to take time off from work to be here, because I, I just feel it's so important that if someone doesn't say something to make it stop, it's not going to stop. And my only other recourse, because he's here till forever, is for me to sell my property. You know, he's been, been a really bad neighbor, and it just, it never ends. You know, I, I would, I would hope that you wouldn't continue it, that you would just tell him no, because it's just going to continue, I'm going to take more time off from work, come here and appeal to you again, and in the meanwhile, he's going to have six, seven, eight, 10 cars there every day. It's from his tenants, it's from him and his wife. At one point, he had four trucks there, he's only allowed two. And he says he's not aware of these things, he just does things, you know, with no regard to the neighbors, no regard to anybody, you know? And it's, it's just really upsetting. It's stressful. So, you know, I hope that you won't continue it, and you just tell him no. No more, no more mess, no more hoarding, no more noise. I mean, the things I could tell you, you know, you would just be, you would think I was making it up. It's just, it's crazy, the craziness going on over there.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
May I address, do I get to do the photographs that she was showing you guys? Just a little bit of a...
Do they email those?
Yeah, you can come...
Absolutely. No, I just wanted to counter what she said.
Jim, if you don't mind, if she wants to submit them to the board through an email, then of course you can look at them, but they're only on her phone.
If, if you want to submit those to the board for the public record, you can do that.
I did twice, and I'm not sure why you didn't get them. I sent them to you on this notice.
Yeah, the first one, it looked like on your phone, you said it didn't send, I never received it.
Okay. I sent one from here tonight.
Okay.
That's, that was the second before.
So she said that's the off page?
No, I sent them to her.
Okay, but either way, we don't have them before us for tonight. They've been submitted as part of the public record.
It is right. Okay, the size, so I need to send multiple emails? I didn't want to inundate you with multiple.
Oh, that's okay, you can try that.
Okay.
I'll do that, I'll run up two. I'll do that then.
Either that or I can send, it's got like a, it's like a Dropbox link.
That'd be great, that'd be great.
All right. Okay, would you just name an address?
Yeah. John Hasenjager, 23 technical. Actually, the beneficiary of this lot is an autistic handicapped grandson of mine with the same name. But this property, I got a call from the previous building inspector about Mr. Reed begging me to file charges against him for all the materials he had in the road that he refused to move. I didn't do so, I kind of turned the other cheek, but the fact is, it's a 36-foot-wide private way. It's about 19 feet paved, so already they were encroaching on the private way nine feet. And, well, pictures, I'm not going to say the pictures, there's everything under the sun out there, using the private way as a side yard. Seems like a nice man. Well, the previous building inspector said he's trying to put 20 pounds of potatoes in a five-pound bag, and I think that's, basically, he's only got 12,000 square feet there, and he's treating it like a farm. He's got, he told me he's got plow trucks, two plow trucks, and these other vehicles, and there just isn't, you know, I'd like to help him find a nice three-acre spot someplace in Plainville, South Walpole or wherever, where he can do all the stuff he wants to do. But this isn't a farm, it's downtown Walpole. It's a business center, residential lot. And, you know, unfortunately, I, I, he's not going to buy the land in back, because, you know, we're not selling it to him, it's going to be a home eventually for someone. So that's unrealistic, he's got a bunch of assumptions here. I think that you should stick to the requirements. I think you can, as Mrs. Conroy said, you can ask him to withdraw without prejudice and waive his fee, or waive his fee when he comes back, if he comes back with a plan. But I think the penalties need to stay and be honored, and, and to see if he can even, before you give him any more favors, see if he can even clean it up and satisfy the building inspector. At least that's what we would appreciate. And I have empathy, but it's just, I think it's just a case where someone has got way too much activity and density for a small house in a small lot, and I feel very bad for the, the late neighbor who has to deal with it every day. I don't have to deal with it every day, but it must be horrific. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Mr. Reed.
Yes, so, besides, I wanted to take a look at those photos, when she submits them, I'll be able to see them. So I have done things to progressive, and when I first moved in, we had a flood in the basement, and a lot of things had to come out of my basement, we did a lot of construction work to redo the basement. That was the initial part of when my backyard was like a mess. And that was the first time my neighbor called everybody on me, and they came down, and they addressed issues. And they told me that, you know, I need to do this, I need to do that, and I explained what happened, blah, blah, blah. That was the very first time. Then after that, they came back, and they said I needed to move my shed, and I did, I moved my shed, because it was over the line, but it, it wasn't obvious that it was over the line, because the way the lot was built, it was the line of trees that stopped, but the actual property line is like where this falls off here, you know? And when I had it, it was over the line, so I had to move it, we physically moved it. And I removed a lot of old truck tires and all that stuff, and moved stuff around. I got it all good, everybody was satisfied, and then just recently, I got a revisit for too many vehicles. There were four trucks, you're correct, there was four trucks there. Well, two of the trucks belong to a high school roommate who is now dating the lady who's the plaintiff.
That's not true.
Okay. So, so the cars parked, the truck was parked next door afterwards, he parted, he parked it next door on her property. And that, that's like, if you Google the address, you could see the black truck is now on her property. And I also since obtained two parking spots across the street, so now I moved two more vehicles across the street, and they're there. And basically, I'm down to like, if everybody comes home at the same time, it's, it's five vehicles. So there could be one over, but it's never there at the same time, because they were, I got my brother-in-law who works, he opens up a gym, 3 o'clock in the morning, so he's gone.
You know, you can resolve this whole thing by getting another spot across the street, and then you're down to the four that you're allowed.
Yeah, there's no more available at the time, so if one more comes available, I, I would do something like that, but, and especially for my, anything that has to do with my work, you know, because I, I do have like a small little thing, which I did for the neighbor, I did a lot of work for her, and she had no problems with me parking anywhere when I was doing work on her house. But the law's the law, so let's conform to the law, and every time I've been asked to, and I've been threatened with fines, but every time I've conformed, I said, what do I need to do? And I've gone and done that. And here again, I'm doing the same thing. So it's just, I'm not sitting here saying, look, I'm not going to conform to these conditions, I'll conform to them. And another spot across the street, if it becomes available, we could get that, but to have someone like my brother-in-law walk from across the street, from an industrial area, cross Route 1A, to come into his house or back and forth at 3:00 AM in the morning, or when he gets out of work at 1:00 in the afternoon, you know, can become a little dangerous. Besides, I'm out, my wife's out, everybody's out to work during the day, so you, you barely find any vehicles in the, in the driveway.
Okay.
That's, I just wanted to let you know that, that it doesn't seem, the picture that was painted there looked really bad. I mean, I'm not saying I'm, I don't get bad sometimes, being a contractor and have too much stuff around, but I do clean it up when I'm asked to do it, and I'm willing to do whatever I have to do. So I have a, obtained a couple spots across the street, and the container that I had moved, which was right, it was beside my garage, where now I'd like to just add a garage, which will alleviate all that stuff, I put that across, so I'm right in the spot with the container across the street as well. It's a little ironic for me, but I am like residential, and directly across the street is commercial, there's hundreds of containers and vehicles parked everywhere, and, and the, the neighbor across from me, his house, he's got a container in it that faces my house, and it's just cars and everything parked everywhere, so it's not like I'm...
It's all about zoning.
It's all about zoning, but my point I'm making is like, I am not the eyesore in the neighborhood. I mean, there's a lot of, there's all industrial stuff around me, and I just happen to be somewhat of a little bit of a redneck, has got like vehicles, if I had my way, I'd probably buy another old custom vehicle, and, you know, I just weigh... way I am, but I'm trying to tidy it up and make good. So I'm just asking that I'll get my plot plan and see if I can get another spot on the side of my house, which is already paved. And, and the paving that John mentioned was there when I bought the house, so I don't know if that has anything to do with being paved over the private way. So I, the way I bought the house, I don't know if that was an issue.
What did you thought, Bob? Well, I'm not comfortable granting a 60-day extension to suspend fines for what essentially is permission to continue a violation that's apparently been ongoing for quite a while.
At the moment, it's not continued. I'm just saying, no.
Well, you said you, you at minimum would have five cars there, right?
Seven.
Well, but...
He said, the applicant said five. So either way, it's a violation.
So it's more than what's permitted. And, you know, I guess, for my sake, I'm not comfortable granting a 60-day extension, which essentially suspends fines for that period of time, given what seems to be the history of violations at this site. You know, my, you know, I might consider a continuance of, of a lesser term if, you know, as a condition of that, we could require compliance in the interim, a maximum of four cars on the site, not to be violated until such, you know, to the extent relief is granted ultimately, you know, yeah, I gotta comply with the current zoning. Those, those would be my thoughts.
Yeah, I agree with the 30 days. Let's get this, let's get this resolved. And so...
30 days, okay.
What does that put us up to for 30 days?
Mr. Chairman, while you're looking that up, can I ask the applicant a question? Are all these vehicles currently registered and inspected to be on the road?
Everyone, yes. I only own one vehicle that's not registered, and that's not even on the property. But I know I'm allowed one vehicle, but that's not even on the property. That's one of the vehicles that's across the street.
Okay.
So to answer the question, it's, it would be June 17th. It would be roughly 30 days.
Is that an if-needed date?
That was the, yeah, that was the secondary date.
Continuing the pontent.
Okay. So we can look at June 17th for you to come back with a, a plot plan that shows what you're trying to do. And I think that at that point, we're going to need that information.
I understand.
And then, you know, and that, and by the way, that's no guarantee that you get anything. So it's, I think...
I might not be adding, I'm not, might, might not ask for all that. I don't know if I need to make an amendment, but if I don't ask for like all eight, if I get parking spots across the street, and I just need an additional one car parking. Just based on, you know, I have two children that have cars, and my brother-in-law has a car, and me and the wife, just five cars, minimum.
Okay, well...
Do we have any other business that's going to be on that night? I just, do we know?
Yeah.
On the 17th?
We have...
Okay, all right.
Okay. Anybody else to comment on this? Okay, yes.
He doesn't have any children living at the site.
No, first off, first off, come up to the microphone, please.
He doesn't have any children living at the site. They might visit, but they don't live there. Like I said, he runs a rooming house. And as for vehicles, does that also include a, a motorcycle? Because he's not counting that.
Okay.
That's a vehicle?
But there are no children living at the site. It's his wife and his brother-in-law. And like I said, he runs a rooming house.
Okay.
My boys are in their 30s, I'm sorry.
But the parking is taking place in the private way, not in his property.
Please identify yourself for the record.
Hassan Jaeger, 23 Pinnacle. The parking is taking place on the private way, which he doesn't even, it's not, he's not parking the vehicles on his own property, which is what he's asking for.
Yeah, that's a...
So it's a whole re, redo. When the plan comes back, it's going to have to be the 36-foot right-of-way, showing parking spaces off of the right-of-way.
Yeah, and that, that ends up being an enforcement issue for anybody that has that right-of-way if they see vehicles parked there.
Yeah. I hate to see him spend a lot of money, because I think he's going to have a conservation issue, too. He's going to be forced for the parking spaces to be within the buffer zone of the river.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm concerned that he's going to spend a bunch of money and find more problems. Okay, so does somebody want to make a motion to continue this until June 17th, 7:00 here at Town Hall?
So moved.
Moved by Drew.
Oh, excuse me, can we do, should we do an extension of time for that?
Just do it to correspond with it, so.
To do what?
An additional 30-day extension of time, just to have it.
No, we don't need, we don't need it for...
I just didn't know if you wanted it.
Special permit? Nope. Because we're going to, I expect we're going to get this resolved.
True, sorry. I'm sorry.
So motion's been made by Drew. Somebody want to second it?
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion on continuing this? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll oppose.
Oppose. Okay, abstain. Okay, so we'll continue this until the 17th. But we never have people oppose it, so I think you get your work cut out for you. Okay? Okay. Okay, next case is case number 24-7, with respect to property at 119 Lewis Ave, for a special permit under Section 94A of the Walpole zoning bylaws to allow the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure by the use of cantilever on the second-story addition into a pre-existing non-conforming front yard setback. So let me see what we have for correspondence on this. We have Fox Hill. Do we have? Yeah, can I have, yeah, I'm sure. Okay, we have a letter from Mr. Crowley stating, this is dated, and for case number 24-7. Permit was issued to Ms. Rosetti to remove the roof and add a second floor to a building on the same footprint. When the inspector went out for a rough frame inspection, he noted that the building did not match the approved plans. The builder had added a cantilever of two feet out the back and front of the house. By doing so, it expanded into the front yard setback by going from 28.1 feet down to 26.1 feet. All work is stopped until they get approval from the zoning board under Section 94A. We have, the town engineer has no comments or concerns at this time. Fire department, no comments or concerns. Board of health, health has no comments. Property is on town saw, and planning board has no comments. So if you would introduce yourself for the record and explain what's going on.
My name is Anthony Rosetti. This is my daughter Gina. She bought the house about a year ago, and she was living there for a little while, and then we started the construction. Okay, and when I, when, when I had the plans at the time, the, the house was just straight up and down. So I looked at it, and I just decided to do a cantilever. So I talked to my architect about it, and he told me we had plenty of room to cantilever the two feet in the front. So, and that being said, I had, I had my framers build out the cantilever, okay? And when I had the inspection, that's when I, I found out, because I even measured the, the front of the house to the, to the back of sidewalk. Now, I figured that this, the back of sidewalk is always five feet, but somebody else told me it was, could be seven, seven and a half.
Be wherever.
Yeah, see? So I didn't figure that on there.
Are you a licensed contractor?
I used to be.
Do you still have a contractor's license?
No, not anymore.
Okay. So...
That was about 40 years ago.
So... The plans that you submitted and got approval for aren't the plans that you built.
But I, I also submitted the, the plans, the right set of plans, which we did. Do you know what I mean?
We updated them to...
We updated the plans, yeah.
Okay, I, I see. We still have Mr. Crowley with us tonight. Mr. Crowley, could you, come on up? You guys can take a seat if you want.
Jim Crowley, building commissioner. Yeah, so as the applicant said, we gave them the approval and reviewed the plans for basically going up in the same footprint, straight up. The houses are pre-existing non-conforming structure, so it's already in the front yard setback. Once we went out for inspection, the cantilever was in play, which moved the house closer to the setback, which zoning-wise, it triggers. So they, they have submitted a whole new, we met them get a whole new set of drawings, so we knew what they were doing. And we also had to get a new site plan to show how far they came into that setback. So by doing so, they did trigger our zoning, which is under 94CA, for expansion of a non-conforming. We're not too worried about it, as luckily, it's built good, but they've expanded an existing non-conformity. It's not detrimental to the neighborhood, it's keeping in line with all the other houses. But once they're done it, they triggered our zoning bylaws.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the explanation. And are you satisfied with the engineering and the, the quality of the work that's there right now?
Yeah.
So...
It meets all, are, are we, we have the inspection passed. We just legally couldn't pass it because of the zoning violation. So it's on hold till this meeting, or the next, this, the vote on this. And then we'll release it if, if the board proves perfectly. If they don't, then we'll have to figure something out.
And I've been doing this for a while, don't see these cases very often. How often do you see these cases?
This is probably the second, third one in town, or since I've been here in five years. And you probably remember the one, I believe, was up on the wall, caught the gentleman at the garage. He turned it sideways and went into his side yard setback. His difference was that was a variance, because he created that. This is just an expansion of a non-conforming structure. It's already in the front yard setback.
But it's going two feet, two feet further?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Crowley. Are there any neighbors or anybody else that wants to comment on this? Sure, just come on up to the microphone.
Expanded out on, just on the second floor only, not the first floor.
Right, it's cantilevered on the second floor. And it's cantilevered on the front and back. Is that correct? Okay. Neighbors?
I'm Jim Langley. We, my wife is the owner of 121 Lewis Ave, your neighbor. I don't know what the non-conforming thing is, but I think everybody on our, on our extension is non-conforming. I'm not so sure our street has ever been accepted beyond the stone wall that is at 106, 108, but that's another story. As far as the house, as far as we're concerned, it's a beautiful addition. It's a good, great addition to the neighborhood. And I think the difference between 26 feet, 28 feet at this point here, we're a dead-end street. I am the dead end, and there's not much we can, not much we can do with the land that we have back there.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else want to comment? Yes?
Yeah, I'm next door. My name's Eric Langley. I live in this, I don't know what the two feet is. It doesn't even look like two feet, this overhang, but this house has been up for a long time. These people need to move in. It's, it looks beautiful. It makes everything better. I think you guys are getting something from it, too. So I just wondered, there's no, no one's complaining about anything around the area about what's going on there.
Okay.
And whatever those rules are, it doesn't make sense to us.
Yep.
There isn't even a sidewalk. If they're there, there's no sidewalk in that part of the street.
So that's why they're here, and hopefully we can fix it tonight, so. Judy?
So to make this right, we have, we should be approving, to allow for the expansion of the pre-existing condition, non-conforming structure. And, oh, hi, Coach.
How are you?
I didn't know you were up there.
Jim Gable.
So, just a second. So, so it sounds like it's paperwork. If we approve this, it's paperwork with Mr. Crowley and the applicant.
Uh, no, there'll be a decision from the zoning board.
Well, decision, yeah. The decision allows the paperwork to be done to let them continue their interior work and get going. Okay.
It'll be a decision that grants the special permit to allow the build-out...
Extension.
Into, into the non-conforming.
Yeah, okay. Got it. Thank you.
Jim Gable, Three Autumn Lane. I think what you're discussing right now is my question. I think it looks fine, personally. I don't live on that street. I live one street over. But what I'd like to know is, how long will it take to finish it?
How long it take it going on? It'll take me another month or half to finish it.
Well, can you guys get that approved tonight?
I think that's going to happen tonight. Thanks, Coach. Okay. Anybody else on this? Okay, so...
I'd just like to say one quick thing. While I, I don't have a problem with this, and I hear the applicants, I understand the applicant situation of just two feet. I'm not in favor of the precedent it sets for any future developers or builders to come in front of the board after the fact and say, well, this is what we did, when they should have known that, especially somebody who was in the industry, as you stated. And I hear, I'm sure it looks good. I'm sure it's, it's fine. I'm sure, I, I just, for anyone that's watching, that's planning on putting a second floor in their house, I, I wouldn't say it's going to be as easy of a situation as where maybe walking through this one. But that's, that's all I wanted to say.
No, totally, totally agree with that, and that's why I asked early on if you were a licensed contractor, so. Okay, Mr. Crowley, you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So everybody good on this?
Yeah.
Okay, does somebody want to, at this point, do you want to close the hearing? You probably do.
Me?
Yes.
Yes, yours.
Okay, so, and first thing we do is we vote on closing the hearing. So at the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
For 119 Lewis Ave.
So moved.
Moved by Judy?
Second.
Second by Drew. Okay, any further discussion on closing the hearing? It'll be the five members that are here tonight. All those in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, now, does somebody want to make a motion to approve the special permit under Section 94A of the zoning bylaws to allow expansion in a, of a pre-existing non-conforming structure that will go, I want to use the exact footage. Will go from 28.1 feet down to 26.1 feet into the front yard setback.
So moved.
Just one clarification, it's consistent with the plans that are dated.
April 12.
April 12. Dated April 12.
Okay.
By Blackbird Architecture. And consistent with the plot. And consistent with the plot plan prepared by Native Tech, dated, also dated 4/12/24.
Okay, referencing the, the architecturals and the plot plan?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? I do have a question. I do have a question. Who's the owner of the property? Okay. Maybe it's old data, it lists Roberta Lynn Purdy?
She was the owner, previous owner.
The previous owner, okay. Sometimes it's just the system hasn't updated. Okay. Okay, so we have the motion before us, anything else to add on that? You good with that, Lauren?
Yep.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay, good luck getting that done. Okay. Next, we have case number twenty-four dash eight, with respect to property at one Fox Hill Drive. Special permit under section twelve, three, C, two, and six of the WAPL zoning bylaws. Will allow the use, storage, and handling of liquid hazardous materials in amounts greater than household quantities within the water protection, sorry, the Water Resource Protection Overlay District. So, good evening, good to see you again. Actually, we have a couple pieces of correspondence. We have the application, and from Cal Baldoff, the town engineer, states, "The floor plan should show an area where safety cabinets for the storage of the proposed hazardous materials will be stored, to a cut sheet for a flammable cabinet with containment sump sufficiently sized for the quantity stated should be provided." And he recognizes that these comments may overlap with the fire and building code requirements under the building permit. Wants an abundance of cautions. Okay, from the fire department. "Permitting in compliance with one point one two of five twenty-seven C M R, Code of Massachusetts Regulations, will be required as applicable. Storage of liquids and hazardous materials must be kept in approved containers and cabinets. Material safety data sheets must be stored on-site, bound, and readily accessible for emergency responders." And that's from the fire chief. We have a letter from, or comments from. Saratoga Sevens, is that? Okay, it says, "Commercial or industrial establishments which store, transport, use, or handle or otherwise manage hazardous materials, totaling more than fifty gallons of liquid or twenty-five pounds of dry weight must be registered with the Board of Health by completing a toxic and hazardous, a toxic and hazardous application." "The planning board notes that this falls within the Water Protection District." There's a hazardous materials list here, but that's not going to be sufficient. Okay. And what I had asked for earlier was, we did, we had a case similar to this a few years ago. It involved property on Renma Drive, one Renma Drive. It was the applicant, Paul Sisternelli, and Bob, you and I were on the board at that point, where, you know, the, the conditions for what was required were all outlined, meaning that they have to provide an annual inventory and things like that, so. Okay, do you want to explain what you're proposing? And good to see you again, you were here a while ago.
So, being a body shop.
Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Chris, from one Fox Hill Drive. So what we're proposing is to be able to paint cars. Previously, we got the permit to be a mechanic shop, something that typically goes with fixing a car is painting it afterwards. As far as the hazardous materials, there's less than fifty gallons. At any given time, we order material as needed, because it is very expensive. Typically, we have about twenty-five to thirty gallons. That's outlined in those data sheets that you have there. That is all the chemicals we keep on the property at any given time. And to address the concerns on where they're being kept, everything's in approved labeled containers, and it will go in an explosion-proof room that does have a dry fire suppression system. It's not denoted on the plan yet, because we do not have one.
Also, an inventory needs to be provided, and what's provided right now just says, solvent-based paints, paint thinner, degreaser, Bondo, solvent-based, you actually have to provide the specific names, you know, the names of those, those compounds, not just.
It should be listed in the data sheets. Do you have copies of the data sheets there?
The data sheets, we didn't print, but they were submitted to the board digitally. There was like a hundred pages, so it wasn't.
I apologize. Every material has many pages in the data sheet.
So, because one of the things, if the fire department goes there, they need to know what, what they're dealing with, and same with the Board of Health and things like that.
And follow that regulation.
So you do have a, an inventory of, of the chemicals that'll be stored there?
Yes.
Okay, anybody else have questions on this?
I, I do. Where is the explosion-proof room with the fire suppression gonna be on your plan?
Directly adjacent to the spray booth. So typically, we have a paint room, a mix room, and that's where all the materials are kept. We don't like to have any chance of dust or anything else getting in that room. If anything were to get in the paint, it would ruin your paint job. So it's just not denoted on the plan yet, because we don't have one ordered. Obviously, we didn't want to order one until we got the approval from you guys.
Okay, is that through you, Mr. Chairman? Is that something that needs to be put on the plan before we have any approval? It's not on the plan, it's not on the plan.
It's a small freestanding room, it's about ten feet by eight feet. I can submit the paperwork for it, we have the plans, we have a purchase order for it, we're just waiting to get the approval to actually purchase it.
So, I'm looking at plans for the paint booth, is that, okay, so you're talking about eight by ten explosion-proof room, is that?
Yes, that would be directly adjacent to the spray booth that you're seeing on those plans.
Judy, is your question about the explosion-proof room shown on the plans?
Yeah, it's not on the, he says, he already said it's not on the plan. Do we need to have it on the plan before we?
Mr. Crowley, you need that on the plan?
And the follow-up to that is, is this vented and exhausted and all that stuff, so that?
So again, that's up to the board if they want it on the plan. Again, it's a prefabricated room. It usually is adjacent to a spray booth room, because they are contained in themselves with sprinkler heads in them as containment unit. So when it comes to do the full fit-out, we will require that on the plans. So if it's not on the plans, if the spray booth's on anything on the plans, then I would recommend put it on the plan.
So you would prefer to see it on, on the plan?
Yeah, it's part of where the, again, spray booth is one. If, again, at the time, we didn't know if it was, because you can get cabinets that are just a metal cabinet, you might seen them in some mechanic shops. There were yellow cabinets that says flammable material, that's one way of holding them. Another way is obviously a room like this. At the time, it was the spray booth with a locker. Obviously, if it's gonna go with a room, we'll need that on a plan.
So, so you're gonna need to have an updated plan that shows where the, where this storage, the flammable storage is going to be located. On here, I know you said it's gonna be adjacent to the spray, the spray booth?
Yes.
But it has to be shown, on the plan where it's gonna be. Okay. Anything else that they need to have?
This drawing, this architectural drawing, is this, this is, was updated by your architect to show the paint booth?
Yes.
The clouded area? There's a clouded area around showing the paint booth?
Yes.
To the bottom of the page, there's another clouded area that shows installing floor drains?
Yeah, so we added additional floor drains.
So is that your architect saying this, or is this an engineer that's actually saying this?
So it was the architect that did this drawing for you, the rendering, but he consulted with the engineer, across the engineering.
Because I'm not an engineer, so I don't know if the new linear trench drain connected to floor drain system is adequately sized. I don't know if it's connected, it looks like oil-water separator location shown is approximately referred to, similar drawings. Is that tied into that? I guess, I remember as from your last application, we did have a new floor drain installed inside the area that was for washing cars, I believe, is what I remember, it was a while ago, so I apologize. And that was gonna be drained to the oil-water separator? But now it seems like any other debris we're funneling into the oil, I don't know, I guess I'm asking.
Gotcha, yeah, so everything's still going into the tight tank, the oil-water separator? So the last time, there was some concerns that it might be possible for some of the material to get outside, which we already have the outside drain being upgraded as well. But just to alleviate that concern, since we're already tearing up the floor, it made more sense just to do a full drain, the entire opening for the garage door, so that there wouldn't be a chance that anything could potentially leak out.
Okay, I just, I don't know when you introduce additional drains, if that increases, changes, modifies anything with that oil-water separator that was previously approved?
It doesn't do anything. All it's doing is just an added protection that.
So then your architect can stamp this plan and say that that's fine?
Yeah.
Actually, Drew, that's one of the things I have, my note is, one of the things that you'll need for our next meeting is, need the plan to be stamped by an engineer.
Oh, okay.
I think this, and also, the other thing, the plan, the plan needs to show the location of the explosion, explosion-proof room. Exactly where it's gonna go on this plan. Patrick, they provided a list of the chemicals and.
Yeah, everything is in a digital copy that was provided to the board.
Right, no need to print out a hundred pages of safety data sheets.
Yes.
I have one other question. If you look at the hazardous material list, and I get what you said about having limited amounts because of the cost of storing excessively larger amounts than needed, but your solvent-based paint varies between fifteen or twenty gallons. Fifteen gallons plus everything else puts you at forty-six gallons, twenty gallons will put you at fifty-one gallons. Have you applied with the Board of Health for the, I apologize, it was mentioned before, the completing a toxic and hazardous acid application?
So we're not going to have more than fifty gallons?
You're gonna stay right below, right below the fifty?
Below the fifty gallons.
So then, it's not fifteen to twenty, it's only fifteen?
Well, it's just any, any conjunction of any amount of the materials. So at one point, we might have, you know, more paint than we do paint thinner. You know what I mean, as you use it, one, one we're gonna have to order, they're always decreasing, and then we're ordering it back.
Okay.
That's why I said between fifteen and twenty.
Thank you.
I mean, I think that would just result in a condition that says, you know, not more than fifty, absent approval from the Board of Health.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Anything else? And we're not gonna, we're not gonna close this tonight, because we're gonna need to have that, the plan stamped, and show where the, where the explosion-proof room is on the plan.
Mr. Crowley mentioned sprinklers, so is the, is the entire site now sprinkled?
The entire site was previously sprinkled, it's still sprinkled. So the paint booth has its own dry fire suppression system.
Okay.
So it works all by itself. Anything happens in that, and it's out within a minute, not even.
Okay, understood.
Anybody from the public to comment on this?
Phil Hamilton, precinct five. Did the Z B A get my email?
Yes, yeah.
Will that be placed in the record?
Yeah.
Okay, so I won't repeat any of that.
Do you want to hit some of the key points, because you're talking about the Water Protection District?
Yes, yes, but I won't repeat the email.
Okay.
This is in a place that puts School Meadow Brook at risk. The study done in Fox Hill one said that by a hydrologist, that six years and nine months, anything spilt onto the ground at that site would reach the wellheads at School Meadow Brook. And we, we have detected hazardous material at School Meadow Brook wellheads in parts patrillion, but below the safe drinking water standard. Anymore, we could lose School Meadow Brook. Now, the preserve was built on our future wellfield. It should not have been built. Forty Bs have no ability to disregard the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, because it's a state bylaw, not a local bylaw. And I've tried to get the law firm that helped us enact that law to help out on this, but I can't afford to do it. So right now, we need to protect this area. And I don't think any permits for any use more than household quantities is in the best interest of the town. And that is my opinion from working with the Water Resource Protection Overlay District for all these years. And if we lose School Meadow Brook, we've got no place to go. Mine Brook only provides one million gallons a day. School Meadow Brook is allowed to produce two and a half million. If we lose that, we're gonna have water restrictions. I know that Town Council at another meeting said that apartments would not be required to get private water sources. I believe they would be, because homeowners, now, if a home, I'll just remind you of Apple Tree Lane.
Okay, Mr. Hamilton, can we talk about this site that we're dealing with on Fox Hill? I know, I know Apple Tree Lane, it's on the other side of town, you're gonna talk about the whole Texaco thing, but let's talk about this site.
No, the important thing in Apple Tree Lane that I want to mention is, when a, when a home doesn't have water, like in Apple Tree Lane, the state had issued orders to demolish those homes. You can't have a home without water. And if we run into a problem and we can't provide enough water for the homes, the commercial property's gonna have to get private sources. That's already happening now up on Route one. The M W R A is providing water to some businesses on Route one. And it's, it's very risky to have this type of hazardous material, which will be delivered by vehicles carrying cargo. And when cargo is put to be delivered, you can have hazardous material that is more dangerous than what is even mentioned. So we're putting our water supply at risk, and we've got no place to go. The state with forty Bs has taken away our only place to go, and we have no other place to go. So I suggest, and in my opinion, this should be turned down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hassan Jaeger, Sewer and Water Commission. Mr. Fastnello asked me to just come by and hear this, but I didn't see any plans, and I apologize, I know this has been ongoing apparently, so I can't really report back to him what the plans show. But he did want to know, so the Board, has the Board of Health reviewed all the items that are going to be stored, the hazardous list and so forth? Do you have a-
There's a, there's a list of materials that will be stored there, which would be provided to the, you know, to the Board of Health. No, actually, no, the Board of Health, because they're going to keep under the quantities, right?
Yeah, I mean, they were provided the same material that the Board was provided, but obviously, if the applicant needs to apply to the Board of Health-
Mr. Crowley-
-he would like to provide that to them.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, not to speak on behalf of the Health Department, but when this application came forward, we did deliver all the specs and everything to the Health Department, even though regarding it's under 50, just to take a look. I don't know if there was any issues with the Health Department.
Okay.
I think it'd be good to have a letter or some kind of a vote to that effect from the Board of Health. The, again, as a commissioner, Mr. Fastnello is a Commissioner of Water, is very concerned about this particular project for some reason. And the other thing, are you going to get in some kind of, from the developer, some indemnification about the designs that Mrs. Connor was talking about, about the different rooms and so forth and so on? Is there, is this all going to be certified by someone?
Yeah. The, we just said that the architectural plans need to be stamped for their engineering work.
Okay. Far as compliant with environmental protection.
Who, who would you want to stamp?
Well, I would think that they would have to hire a consultant who would certify as a professional environmental engineer that this satisfies the state and local, et cetera, requirements in every fashion. And I'm not, again, I'm, this is someone else's issue, but I'm here, and I said I would try to find out about it. The, I mean, the risk, metal bellows, the TCE that contaminate our wells was fitted in a thimble like this big, and it cost millions of dollars and years and years of remediation. So, it's, it's this kind of thing, this is a sensitive area. I won't, I won't, I'll let him, since you're condemning, I'll encourage him to come and represent himself on his issues. But I just wanted to bring it out, and I'll tell him. Will they have plans here the next time so he can see what these rooms look like and so forth, the protections?
There's already been plans submitted. We just want more details in the plans. They're all submitted online.
Well, okay, but I guess if it's a public hearing, and he's a town official, he's right to ask to see the plans at the hearing.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. We have, have them have the plans at the hearing.
They'll be at the hearing, and they're also in the, the office. He can-
Call in, John?
Yeah, he'll give you a copy right now.
Yeah. Well, good, that way he'll, sure, I'll take them and give them to Mr. Fastnello. Thank you.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah.
In addition to the raw material storage, can you discuss whether there's any hazardous waste that will be generated as a result of using the materials, and if so, where that gets stored or-
Yeah, so there is hazardous material generated. So, same as you paint a room in your house and you'd be left over with paint. You leave it out, lit off, let it dry up. When it's dry, you're able to dispose of it. It can either be disposed in the trash can, or it can be picked up by, there's a company that does it. But typically, it's recommended that it dries out. Typically, when we spray cars, it's in an 8 to a 16-ounce cup. There's about an ounce or so left. It dries up within hours in the paint room, where it's ventilated, everything's fine. Once it's dried up, you put it in the trash, it's safe.
And the explosion-proof room, is there's no drainage or anything associated with that?
So, that's a completely sealed room. That's, the whole point of it is that if anything were to happen, that also has a dry suppression fire system that goes off. It's out.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. Are you going to use a water-based paint?
No. Currently, we're using solvent-based paint.
Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, I worked on with IEP on the metal bellows problem. They only released teaspoons of that commodity that create the TCE. And IEP, with hydrology people working on it, found that they release probably less than a pint of the material that caused our TCE problem that is still going on. We still use aeration to treat the TCE. And we're talking about fire department response, and right now, and Mr. Hassan Jaeger knows better than I, the firefighting foam is pretty high in our water at School Meadow Brook. So, we can't go up much more in that firefighting foam exposure. So, if there's a fire in this area, we could lose our drinking water, and I think that's very risky. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? So, for the next time, we need to have a stamped plan, signed off, you know, you know what I mean by stamped and signed off?
I can have that to you guys within the week.
Okay. And also, showing on that plan where the explosion-proof room is going to be located. Mr. Crowley, is there anything else that you want from your, your perspective?
No.
Board members, anything else? We've got the chemical inventory that's been provided, and it's, the decision's going to look a lot, I would expect it's going to look a lot like the one that we already did for another applicant who, you know, was storing, he was actually over 50, 50 gallons, but it'll be similar format to that, the decision.
Yeah, I guess just for, so we can clearly reference the type of room, if you could just give us some of the technical specifications of it so that we can refer to model, whatever. I don't know how these are-
I have a full printout I can actually give you guys. So, I don't know if you have the documents there for the spray booth where it kind of shows all the dimensions and how it's laid out.
Yep, yep.
So, I have, it's laid out just like that, but-
Okay. Okay, that's great.
It's really nothing crazy. It's almost the same kind of spec as the spray booth. The only difference is, there's nothing inside except for the dry suppression system. Then you just throw in little paint banks, like when you go to Home Depot and they mix your paint.
Yeah.
I just have one of those. That's it.
You, what do you think your turnaround time is on this information?
I would assume it would be-
Okay, so-
I have to call tomorrow, and I would assume you-
Would you like to be on the agenda for June 5?
That'd be great.
Hold on, is, is that, is that okay? June 5?
That's fine.
Okay, okay. Okay. At the request of the applicant, does somebody want to make a motion to continue this until June 5? 7 o'clock here at Town Hall.
Some moved.
Moved by Judy?
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion on continuing? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. So, we'll see you on June 5 with some additional information on your part.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have minutes from May 1. Did somebody have, people have a chance to review those, those minutes?
Yes, I had no comments.
Anybody else?
Really? Nothing?
Do you have, do you have any?
No, no, I was saying, Bob, nothing?
I could have nitpicked, but I didn't. Getting a reputation, I gotta-
Yeah, I know. I've heard.
Yeah, we like it.
We like your reputation. Okay, I review, I mean, of course, I didn't see anything, but that's, I don't read it as thoroughly as Bob does, so I read it, but does somebody want to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 1?
Some moved.
Moved by Judy?
Second.
Second by, who said that? Bob? Okay. Any further discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried.
Abstained.
Yeah, Drew, abstained. Even though you came late. What were you missing then?
That was, oh, no, this was a different one.
Yep. Okay. So, does anybody have anything else? Patrick?
Talking about summer meeting dates, or?
No.
No? Okay. Summer meeting dates? I think that we had an email about that, but I don't know if we need to discuss it or not, but I didn't have a problem with it.
The one I got was December, September 4, and you sent me about July 8, but I think that that was an error.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
That's fine.
Like ideally, we like to meet once, so.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Once is nice, if we can.
Okay, so, hearing nothing else from the board, does somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Moved by Judy?
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Okay, good night, everybody.